The following is a production of Keri TV, the Town of Keri's government access channel.
The May 5th meeting of the Keri Town Council, and at this time I would like to recognize my esteemed colleague, Mr. Ed Yerha for the ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. Every month of the year is designated as National Something Month. You know, May is no exception to that. Matter of fact, May happens to be the most popular month for all these kind of observances. In a few minutes, we're going to have a proclamation designating May as Building Safety Month in Keri, and then that's followed by a proclamation designating Municipal Clerks Week. Municipal clerks should have a month, in my opinion, not just a week with the work that you do, but nonetheless. It's also National Bike Month this month, and it's National Older Americans Month. And I'm not looking at that for any reason, I'm sorry. There's a list this long of all the different commemorations that we have during the month of May, but there's just one that I couldn't let pass by, because yes, May is National Historic Preservation Month.
No!
Yes. In fact, the Wake County Commissioners have issued a proclamation to this effect at their recent meeting, and in celebration, they designated a new landmark in Wake County, the Robertson O'Brien Farm. So I thought it just might be an appropriate time to briefly remind everybody of the seven landmarks we have here in Keri.
Look what's here!
Each one of those. The first is, of course, the most well-known, which is the Page Walker, right next door. The second one is the Guess Ogul House, the Pink House on Academy Street. Mr. Ogul always reminded us that technically the color was not pink, it was rosario, not pink. A few doors from the Ogul House is Dr. Hunter's House, which is that beautiful brick craftsman style house, and it's noted not just for its architecture, but if you go very slowly and look in the backyard, you'll see Keri's historic chicken coop, which shows that chickens were allowed in backyards years before we acted upon it a few years ago. Over in Morrisville Carpenter Road, you have the Carpenter Warehouse and Meeting House, and across the street from that, the Carpenter Farm Supply Store, which is an actual store. It's been a store for over 120 years continuously, and you can actually today go in and buy things, and in so doing, step back into history. If you haven't done so, I urge you to do that. Then there's the Keri First Christian Church Cemetery on Cornwall Road, which is off of Kildare Farm near Glen Air. It's the location where most of Keri's prominent African-American citizens from the 19th and 20th centuries are buried, citizens who contributed richly to Keri's history. And finally, Hillcrest Cemetery at the end of Page Street, right here in downtown. It's a place where 15 former mayors are buried, many of our founding fathers going all the way back to around 1840, but I bet you 90% of the people who live in Keri today have never been there or have any idea where it is. So I urge everybody to stop by Hillcrest Cemetery for a brief visit, not necessarily an extended stay. Next year is the 50th anniversary of the National Historic Preservation Act, which was signed into law by President Johnson and established the National Register of Historic Places. So it's my hope that with the efforts of Keri's own Historic Preservation Commission and with the cooperation of willing property owners, that we can celebrate the 50th anniversary of this act next year, if not sooner, by adding to this list of seven Keri landmarks. It's been said that preservation is a means to enable current residents to feel part of the continuum and to achieve a sense of stability and belonging. I think in Keri, that's especially important, because we're a town that has seen so much change over the years. So I wish everyone happy Historic Preservation Month and invite everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Yerha, for that information and the entertainment that went along with it. Okay, so we're now at Agenda Item 1.3, which is the adoption of our agenda. The applicant for the Dellinger property, Item 6.5, has requested that we table this item to a future council meeting. This item is already tabled and was tabled at the March 12th meeting, so if it is the pleasure of the council to meet the request of the applicant, we must first remove this item from the table and then table it again. So I would offer that to the council, if that's what they would like to do. I would entertain a motion at that time.
So moved.
Motion and a second to table this, to remove this from the table. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Great.
Now, motion to table.
Second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, we are at the portion of the meeting where we can adopt the amended agenda. Is there a motion to do?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have an agenda. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. Before we get started with our agenda items under recognitions, reports, and presentations, I would like to recognize the scouts in the audience and would ask them to stand at this time. They're here working on a merit badge. So we're now at Item 2.1, and I would invite Scott Berry from our staff to join me at All scouts, please stand at this time. the podium. What Scott does, as Mr. Yerha mentioned, is very important to the Town of Keri. He makes sure that all of our buildings are safe with his staff, and that's very, very important. It's something we probably take for granted, but if we didn't do that, we would have more problems than we can imagine. So taking this time to thank you and your staff for all that they do to keep Keri safe is what we're here to do, and I would like to read a proclamation to that effect. Whereas, through our continuing efforts to address critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability in the built environment that affects our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, we are confident that our structures are safe and sound. Whereas, the international codes are mostly, most widely adopted, building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation, they are used by most United States cities, counties, and states. These modern building safety codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, fires, and earthquakes. Whereas, vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry work year-round to implement the international codes to protect all of us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. Whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council and International Code Council Foundation to remind us about the critical role of our local officials who work tirelessly to ensure we have safe, efficient, and livable buildings. The 2015 theme is resilient communities start with building codes. Whereas, we observe Building Safety Month, we are proud to publicly acknowledge the essential services that our code officials provide our community, which protects lives and property in Keri. Now therefore, I Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Keri, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 15th as Building Safety Month in the Town of Keri. I encourage Keri's citizens to participate in the town's Building Safety Month activities in local Lowe's Home Improvement stores during the month of May. Furthermore, we applaud all Town of Keri staff that play a role in building safety. We extend our appreciation to them for enhancing the quality of life for all Keri's citizens by providing for health, safety, and welfare. Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Building Safety Month campaign helps promote building safety by increasing awareness of how the North Carolina State Building Code and code officials improve and protect the places we live, work, and play. On Saturday, May 23rd, town staff will be at Lowe's Home Improvement Store on Maynard Road, and throughout the month, we have information in the inspections and permits counter to answer citizens' questions about building permits. I'd just like to thank council for your support this month and throughout the year. Thank you.
As Mr. Yerha alluded to, there are several proclamations and several things this month that we are recognizing. The next one is clerks. As you said, this should be a month. For those of you that don't know, clerks are responsible for our public records. Any interaction you have with the town about town business is a public record. They have to keep track of that. They have to produce it when they're asked to produce it, and they have to do it in an efficient and effective manner, and that's not easy. In addition, they take on other tasks such as helping this council stay together, and believe me, that's like herding cats. So they are invaluable to this town, and they do a fantastic job. And I would like to read a proclamation recognizing the municipal clerks in our town. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of government exists throughout the world, whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of governments at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, municipal, and international professional organizations. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Keri, North Carolina, on behalf of the entire Keri Town Council, do recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2015, as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerks and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and the exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. To accept this, our Town Clerk, Sherri Scoggan. Thank you.
And just a very big thank you for the recognition. This is possible because of the support of council, staff, and the citizens of the community. It makes every day a pleasure to be in Keri. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to Item 2.3, which is the Presentation of Fiscal Year 2016 Budget. And at this time, I'll recognize our Town Manager, Ben Shiver, for this presentation. Mr. Shiver.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Weinberg and members of the council submitted for your review and information this evening, and in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, is the recommended annual budget for fiscal year 2016 for the Town of Keri. The budget is a plan that presents financial information summarized by major category of expense for each department budget and outlines the operations of the Town of Keri government and its component operating and capital programs. As required by state law, the budget is balanced and identifies methods of raising and spending funds for specific programs during the coming fiscal year. Mayor and members of the council, this year, my presentation will be a little bit different, as you will note on your screen, as will our folks in our audience, as well as those at home. We are going to show you, as I go over some of this information, it is on the slide, so you can follow along with some of these as I go through it. The first thing that I would like to point out is the general basics, as you can see from number one there, is the recommended operating budget is $218.2 million, which represents a 4.1% increase over last year. The recommended capital budget is $77.9 million, which is a 51.3% increase, and most of the increase connected with the latter, the capital project, is for water projects than the capital fund. I will be recommending a total tax increase of three cents, and I'll explain the other one cent in just a moment. And to give you some context on how that impacts the citizens of Keri, it would be approximately an additional $60 per year on the tax bill for property valued at $200,000. The recommended budget proposes a two-cent tax increase to pay the debt service associated with issuing the remaining $40 million of general obligation debt approved by the voters in 2012. As with the first bond issuance associated with the 2012 bonds completed in 2012, or the FY 2013 budget, funds raised through the tax increase prior to the bond sale will be transferred to the bond projects and will reduce the amount of debt that must be issued. Without the two-cent tax increase, the total operating budget would be increasing by approximately 1.96%. The general fund operating budget will grow by 3.9% and includes, among other things, the following: increases in the cost of doing business, such as rising electricity rates and healthcare costs; merit pay increases that will keep us competitive in hiring and retaining high-performing employees; new positions, services, and equipment that will allow us to keep providing high-quality service to our citizens. Through our internal budget process, the operating departments requested $8.1 million in new positions, services, and equipment within the general fund for fiscal year 16. It was necessary to reduce this amount by 53% to $3.8 million in the recommended budget. I'll have a chart a little bit later on that shows that in a little different format. The recommended budget includes just over 24 new positions out of 54 that was requested by the departments. Some of these positions will improve customer service to businesses engaged in construction and land development projects, but most are added simply to help keep up with the growing workload that is most frequently brought on by our growing population. Even with the addition of these positions, our employee positions per 1,000 residents will decline somewhat to 8.1. Before the recession, the town had 9.8 employees per 1,000 residents. Because we have achieved efficiencies over the last eight years, we are still able to provide the high-quality services that our citizens expect, but this ratio is not sustainable as we go forward into the future. So we will need to pay attention to that, I think, beginning in next year's budget. I believe that in the future, we will need substantially more positions than are recommended in this lean budget to continue providing high-quality services to our residents. Our forecasts show that at the current town tax rate of 35 cents, general fund revenue would grow by only 2% or $2.8 million. The small amount of additional revenue is due in part to losing $1.5 million as a result of the General Assembly's elimination of the municipal privilege license tax. Because our solid waste cost recovery has fallen below our target of 95%, I'm recommending a $1 increase in the solid waste fee to provide additional revenue for that service. Even with this fee increase, the projected revenue for the coming year was not sufficient to fund the new positions and services that I'm recommending. As a result, I'm proposing an additional one-cent tax increase. This increase would produce $2.2 million, which would offset the $1.5 million revenue taken away by the General Assembly's elimination of the privilege license tax and provide an additional $711,000 to support the recommended positions and service. This would be the first time since 1990 that the town's tax rate would increase for a purpose other than repayment of voter-approved debt. On your screen now, you will see a chart that shows a general outline of how the general fund budget was developed, and you can see that the budget requests submitted by the departments exceeded the amount of projected revenue by $7.3 million. And I would encourage council and others to take a close look at that chart as you have the time. On the next slide, we show some further detail on the development of the general fund budget, and the gap that I mentioned just a moment ago was eliminated by first, reducing spending to those items that I felt were important to maintaining our service levels, and second, by adjusting fees and proposing the additional one-cent tax increase over the two cents dedicated to the bond referendum. So I want to point out and be clear about this, that even though the tax increase would include enough dollars to cover the estimated $1.5 million revenue loss as a result of losing the privilege license tax, please note that there were still an order of $7.3 million in requests that we had to deal with and could not substantially meet. So even by raising taxes and covering that, we still had to eliminate many things from the department director's request. The next series of slides I will go through fairly quickly, as they point out some of the highlights of the actual items, projects, programs that will be undertaken if council adopts the proposal, that I think are important for council and the public to understand at this point. This does not go into everything that's included in the budget, but touches on many of the more important ones. You will also note that they are grouped by activity area as part of our new PBB budgeting program, which groups things according to priority categories. The first one is attractive well-planned and livable community, and you can see here, I'm recommending approximately $174,000 for staffing to better serve applicants for permits related to the development and land use programs that we operate. $166,000 for staffing to oversee the transportation, engineering, traffic engineering, and greenway design elements of development review. These two areas within our operations are some of the ones that are hit most directly by increasing population growth, as well as the continuing improvement of the economy. Continuing with the general fund operating budget, you see under the category of economic vitality and development, $821,000 for consulting services and overtime so the town can respond to an expected surge in encroachment permit applications, line locations, and resident concerns relating to gigabit fiber installation. This refers both to the recent activity by Google, as well as AT&amp;T and other providers that the town must meet in these service demands. Because they're going to be moving very rapidly through the community and want to implement this project quickly, a substantial demand is going to be made on permit applications, and we need to respond to that. I could point out also that, as we'll see momentarily, there's, in the additional funds generated by the additional one cent I have recommended out of the total three cents, generates approximately $711,000, and you can see that very closely matches this amount for this coming year. Second bullet point notes $40,000 for consulting services to revise the downtown strategic plan by building on the results of Imagine Keri to reflect changes in the town since the current downtown plan was originally developed. Under the category of effective transportation and mobility, this year, I am not recommending any expansion of the C-Trans fixed route service for the current year. Wake County is considering a November 2016 referendum on a sales tax increase to support transit, which would make funding available for new service by municipal systems. If we move forward and plan for new routes or expanded service hours and were implemented in this coming year, then those new services would not be eligible for this funding. So we believe it is best to wait, at least for a short time, and see what happens with the transit program for Wake County. You will also note, under the general capital budget, there is $1 million for intersection projects to improve traffic flow and safety. And continuing with quality recreational leisure and cultural opportunities, $7,701, which is net of revenue that would be generated by this program, is recommended for a recreation program for West Keri residents at Mules Park Middle School. Because of the location of the school, its presence, it gives us an opportunity, on a limited basis, at least initially, to extend some services of this nature for a relatively small amount of money. $105,000, approximately $106,000 for staffing to provide coordination and oversight of parks administrative functions. $100,000 to update the park's master plan to include the portions of Keri within Chatham County. As you recall, that plan has already been developed with Chatham, so it's very important that we follow up with the master plan to cover that area. General capital budget, other items, $550,000 for improvements at Suratoma and Cocoa Booth Amphitheaters. A significant amount of that is for handicapped and disabled access to the Suratoma Theater, which has needed attention. $275,000 for Thomas Brooks Park Field renovations. Under the category of reliable, sustainable infrastructure, which is becoming very, very important to us as the community ages and our infrastructure continues to age, $105,000 for staffing to ensure the efficient and effective completion of capital projects, $138,000 for staffing to improve planning, development, implementation of utility capital projects. And again, under the general capital budget category, $6 million for resurfacing of town streets, $1.6 million for this project quickly, a substantial demand is going to be made on permit applications, and we need to respond to that. I could point out also that, as we'll see momentarily, there's in the additional funds generated by the additional 1 cent I have recommended out of the total 3 cents generates approximately $711,000, and you can see that very closely matches this amount for this coming year. Second bullet point notes $40,000 for consulting services to revise the downtown strategic plan by building on the results of Imagine Cary to reflect changes in the town since the current downtown plan was originally developed. Under the category of effective transportation and mobility, this year, I am not recommending any expansion of the C-Trans fixed route service for the current year. Wake County is considering a November 2016 referendum on a sales tax increase to support transit, which would make funding available for new service by municipal systems. If we move forward and plan for new routes or expanded service hours and were implemented in this coming year, then those new services would not be eligible for this funding. So we believe it is best to wait, at least for a short time, and see what happens with the transit program for Wake County. You will also note, under the general capital budget, there is $1 million for intersection projects to improve traffic flow and safety. And continuing with quality recreational leisure and cultural opportunities, $7,701, which is net of revenue that would be generated by this program, is recommended for a recreation program for West Cary residents at Mules Park Middle School. Because of the location of the school, its presence, it gives us an opportunity on a limited basis, at least initially, to extend some services of this nature for a relatively small amount of money. Approximately $106,000 for staffing to provide coordination and oversight of parks' administrative functions. $100,000 to update the park's master plan to include the portions of Cary within Chatham County. As you recall, that plan has already been developed with Chatham, so it's very important that we follow up with the master plan to cover that area. General capital budget, other items, $550,000 for improvements at Suratoma and Kokabooth Amphitheaters. A significant amount of that is for handicapped and disabled access to the Suratoma Theater, which has needed attention. $275,000 for Thomas Brooks Park Field renovations. Under the category of reliable, sustainable infrastructure, which is becoming very, very important to us as the community ages and our infrastructure continues to age, $105,000 for staffing to ensure the efficient and effective completion of capital projects, $138,000 for staffing to improve planning, development, implementation of utility capital projects. And again, under the general capital budget category, $6 million for resurfacing of town streets, $1.6 million for sidewalk and pedestrian improvements, and $0.5 million for stormwater condition assessment and rehabilitation. In the same category, but under the utility capital budget, $19 million to increase the water treatment plant capacity and reliability by building a third raw water pipeline. This project alone accounts for the significant rise in the percentage expenditure of the capital plan under the utilities department or the utilities fund. $5 million for upgrading water lines and $3.5 million for the new Kilmaine Water Storage Tank. Under the category of safe community, under the general fund, $211,000 to fully staff trucks when the new fire station number two opens on Chatham Street. $130,000 for staffing to maintain the police department's standard of 11 complexes per Project Phoenix officer under the Project Phoenix program. $96,000 for staffing to respond to growth in the number of animal calls. That represents funding for a new position, and I believe it's been as far back as the early 2000s when we last added a position there. So their calls, demands for service have been extensive. If we don't staff properly in this area, then we have uniform officers having to be called out for animal control issues, so we believe this is a more effective and efficient use of our dollars. Under general capital budget, in this category, $650,000 for replacement of a fire pumper vehicle. And in the category called governance, which generally covers manager's office and also central services in the Cary organization, $311,000 for the technology services staffing to preserve network security and to ensure the successful implementation of several projects, several major software projects. Also, approximately $353,000 to address several facility maintenance and safety concerns, and that is a broad category of things that addresses safety and facility maintenance throughout all of our buildings and grounds that the town owns and operates. The next slide will graphically show you the expansion for the budget by functional area and where the categories and proposed dollars are going. It may be a bit difficult to read out in the audience, but generally, you can see where the infrastructure dollars are going. Dollars for public works and public safety also occupy large amounts. I would encourage you to take a look at this and would note also that over 70% of the expansion funding is devoted to either infrastructure, public works, or public safety. The next slide shows our utility rate increase and shows how the town, for the past several years, have been approaching our utility rate increases. I'm recommending that they increase by 3.81% this year, and rate increases will be at or below that level for the next seven years, we estimate. The use of rate smoothing, which is graphically illustrated in this chart and illustrates it very well, allows us to have consistent and predictable increases in utility rates rather than large increases in years when major capital projects are undertaken and smaller increases in other years. So as I noted, if you look at that, you can see how that would operate based on our estimates, and council some years ago chose to smooth this rate, and you can see our estimate out to the year 2023. But also note that one of the pressures that we are continuing to deal with is that we are continuing to grow as a community, and the per-person use of water continues to drop. So you've kind of got, from a business standpoint, you've got the errors going in the wrong, in the directions you don't want. The positive from that is, for a valuable resource that is very important to us and to this region, we have indeed been successful with our conservation efforts. The next slide, I think, is an interesting and one we will present to council in subsequent years as a comparison. As I mentioned earlier, as the town ages, we move more and more into more of a maintenance mode of operation, at least to some degree, and so it's important to know where our dollars are going, where we're maintaining existing infrastructure or expanding and developing new facilities. And I expect the maintenance portion of our dollars will increase over the years, so that will put pressure on what we can do in terms of new projects. I have already noted several of the projects that have been included above in the pie chart. Beginning this year, the projects included in the first five years of the general capital improvement plan, which run from fiscal years 16 to 2020. That's a five-year plan, are limited by the amount and types of funding that is projected to be available in each of the five years. As a result, most of the projects programmed for funding during this period will maintain our existing infrastructure and facilities rather than expand those facilities or build new ones. And as I have pointed out, that will be a, needs to be a focus of our concern in subsequent years, as that maintenance piece will take more and more of our time. The last slide that I wish to show will summarize for council and the public what our budget review and adoption schedule is planned to be going forward. As noted tonight, this evening, the budget is being presented to the public. On May 19th, the council will conduct a budget work session beginning at 6:00 PM here on the Town Hall campus. Then on May 21, another budget public, I'm sorry, the first budget public hearing will be held. That'll be an opportunity for the public to come to this place and express your concerns or any issues that you wish to bring up regarding the budget. Another council budget work session on June 11th, as well as a public hearing later that evening. One more council budget work session is scheduled for June 16 if needed, and our estimate is that on June 25th, at a regular meeting of the council, that the budget will be adopted. The recommended budget can be found on the town's website under the publications tab, and printed copies of the proposed budget will be available for review starting tomorrow at the town clerk's office at Town Hall and at the Wake County libraries on Academy Street and Lewis Stevens Drive. And before I conclude, Mayor, I do wish to give some thanks to a number of people who have really done a lot of hard work. First, to all of the department directors, most of them are out in the audience this evening, who every year put lots of thought, consideration, and time going into their recommended budgets that they submit. This year was a little bit more difficult because, as I noted in some of our capital program, and as council is aware, we changed that focus a bit, so it was a little bit new to us and kind of had to shift gears with that a little bit as we went forward with the new process. But I think it worked well, given everyone's attention to that and hard work to make sure that that worked. Also want to thank our budget director, the budget office in total, but our budget director, Carl Knapp, who is at the podium, also the budget staff, Stacy Techie, Kathy Yeras, Heather Drennan, Elaine Huntley, and Emily Ryle, who also helped with the details of the budget and putting that together. Not only the department directors have their work cut out in preparing the budget under some new guidelines for capital, but the budget department had to assemble all the instructions and direct them and guide them and receive all that and put it in a document that approaches 400 pages, the full document. So I want to give them a thanks for a great job, and I believe this year, we will have better information and better presentation to the council and to the public. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Shiver, and thank you, Mr. Knapp. People don't know that our budget is approved before July 1st, and you guys start immediately on the next one. So thank you for a year's worth of work almost to get to this point, and now it's our turn to dig in and see what you have. And as was pointed out, our first meeting on this will be May the 19th, and the first public hearing is the following week, May 23rd, I think. No, May 21st.
21st.
Yep, that's right. Going from memory there. So, thank you. All right, we now have reached item three on our agenda, is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing. And since we have no public hearings this evening, you may speak on any topic. I will enforce the three-minute time limit, to be fair to all of our speakers. The timer is located on the podium, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the yellow light turns to a flashing red, I will interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I'm going to interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. And I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that groups have a spokesperson for their groups to reduce repetitive comments and to help us understand the points that are trying to be made. I also ask that members of our audience respect that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. Public Speaks Out has a one-hour time limit, so again, I have to be fair to all of our speakers. I'm going to stick to that three-minute time limit for each speaker. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Mayor Weinberg, council members, my name is Russ Curtis. I'm the general manager of McGregor Downs Country Club. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the management, as well as the owners, from McGregor Downs Country Club, Prestonwood Country Club, and Lockmere Golf Club. I'd like to thank Deputy Chief Godwin and the town staff for working to clarify the issue of the noise ordinance. We want to be good neighbors, and I want to thank the council for reviewing this issue. Combined, our three clubs represent over $22 million in annual revenue to the town of Cary. We employ hundreds of employees. We've been a vital part of Cary for decades, and we've been maintaining our golf courses all this time. One thing that has happened during the span of that time is our equipment for golf course maintenance has generally gotten quieter. We do have seasonality in our business. In the area of golf, in the wintertime, we don't have as much activity. The sun comes up typically in the middle of December, about 7:15 in the morning. We start our work in the winter months about 7 o'clock, if it's not too cold. In the warmer months, the sun is up about 6:00 AM, so we start at 6:00 in the morning to prepare our golf courses for our customers. We want to continue our ability to take care of our golf courses for our customers. With the staff report, we would like to continue to maintain the courses as we have. What is significant with the staff report is it does give us clarity on the ordinance, and we think that's very valuable. On behalf of the three Cary country clubs, we unanimously support the staff report on the noise ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Pascandola. I live at 100 Corsica Lane. For four years, I was on the board of governors of McGregor Downs Country Club. For two of those years, I served as president of the club. My purpose tonight is to pass on my experience as it related to noise issues at McGregor Downs. During the four years that I was on the board, we had one member, one golf course lot owner complain to us about noise, only one. And that is more significant than it sounds because McGregor Downs Country Club's membership is not exactly a shy membership when it comes to voicing complaints if something bothers them, and so I found that pretty instructive. We took that lot owner's concern seriously, among other things, we upgraded equipment to reduce noise further. We tried delaying golf course maintenance work, which resulted in correspondingly delayed tee times, which did not go over well with the membership. A lot of folks, I'm not one of them, by the way, like to get up very early and play as early as they can, and so we faced considerable member concern about that. We also took a look in trying to balance the needs of 600-plus members with the concerns of this one lot owner at the history of noise issues at McGregor Downs. That is, did we have a lot of complaints over the years about this? How seriously should we take this? And I can only speak directly to my four years as a governor, but I spoke to past presidents and past board members going back some 25 years and found that they also had not experienced much more than one owner complaining, and so we sort of just took the equities into consideration and realized that we needed to make as much of our members happy, and we found also that we were, in fact, complying with the noise ordinance. So, you know, speaking on behalf of the club, I'm just a member there. I don't have anything to do with the current owners. I'm in support of the staff's recommendations, and I would encourage you to adopt them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dan Hartnett, and I will not take up the full three minutes, so I've been a member of McGregor Downs Country Club for 22 years. During those 22 years, I've served on numerous committees, I've been on the board of directors, I've been on finance committees, I've been on social committees, and as such, I have come to meet many, many of the members of the club over the years, residents, non-residents, residents and non-members of the club, so a very wide cross-section of people who live in McGregor Downs. I've lived on the 10th Fairway, which is close proximity to the clubhouse, to the tennis facility, to the swimming pool. It's right in the middle of the fairway. It's a par-five for those of you who play golf, so it's a long hole, and I live three houses away from the person that Steve Pascandola referred to as the member who has complained about this noise. I have not had any problem with noise. My neighbors that I talk to and the members I talk to have never had any problem with noise, and I was asked to speak on behalf of the club tonight. I was very surprised that this was an issue, and I guess it is an issue for an individual or a few individuals, but for the broader membership of McGregor Downs, we do not believe this is an issue at all, and I am in complete support of the staff report and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joe Elphick. I live on 114 Lockenvar Court, two houses down on the other side of the block from the member that has complained about the noise. I lived there in the 90s. I happen to live in a house that the member who's complaining lived there. He sold the house to me, never complained about noise. That member moved to another location on the golf course on the 12th Fairway, never heard anything about noise, moved back on a block on the 10th Fairway, and now there's a noise problem. What I find very ironic, when he moved in, he removed trees between the golf course and the house. Let me say that again, he removed trees from the golf course to the house. He's inviting noise. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Curtis Scott. I'm a member of McGregor, and I've lived there for 10 years. I'd like to expand on one subject, and then I'll be brief. The nature of extending the start time is significant in the golf industry. For those of you that don't golf, it's a premium time to have an early morning tee time for our membership, and as such, in a service business... And as such, in a service business, if you equate it to like a restaurant business, if you said you were going to postpone dinner for an hour, you're not serving your population well. So to some extent, it's not just a financial implication, but it's a customer satisfaction implication for our membership. When we did, as Steve mentioned, when we did trial that with our membership, there was widespread dissatisfaction, and as an entity that's in the business of servicing customers, that we took notice of. So I'm in support of the staff report, and I appreciate your support also.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Wendy Lewin. I am a resident of McGregor Downs neighborhood. I'm a member of the Country Club, and I am the current chair of the advisory board at the Country Club. I'm a real estate broker in the community, and I have been since 1991. And in all of the transactions that I have done in the neighborhood, I have never had anybody complain to me personally regarding the noise. As a resident, I have never had any of my neighbors, whether they were members of the club or just neighbors, complain about any of the golf course maintenance noise or that it was even an issue to them. Purchasing on the golf course, people are enticed to do it because of the visual enhancements that they achieve out the backside of their house, and that has to be kept up. The timing of it, as they've referenced before, would impact the club's ability to service the Country Club community. So for the well-being of the golf course communities, which impact Cary greatly, providing a lot of nice housing to incoming new residents of the community, I would like for the council to recognize the significance of these communities. The advisory board supports, fully supports, the recommendations of the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Jim Kilpatrick. I live on McGregor Downs, and I am the resident. That's the one everybody's referring to. But you've got some emails. You know it's not just from me. You've got it from a lot of neighbors. And frankly, I want to tell you, I've had no problem with the noise for the last year. It's fine. I thought it was all settled. You've got the decibels, you've got the reading. I thought this is an issue that's been settled as of the end of March. Then in April, just last week, I talked to Chief Godwin. You've got to understand, there's two points I want to make tonight. His recommendations are, they can use any equipment, any of their equipment, at 6:00 a.m., and the noise limits do not apply. He will confirm that. They can use 110-deciibel blowers, they can use 150-deciibel mowers out on the fairway, they can use any equipment. None of the noise applies under that proposal. That's what I'm having a problem with. McGregor's done a nice job. They've got mowers, they work on the greens, and they don't make noise. I don't have any problem where it is right now. It's good. It's fine. The other thing I wanted to make a point of was that in his report, he looked at other communities, and he didn't list them, but I will. These are the communities that don't give exemptions to golf courses. Raleigh, Charlotte, Wilmington, Pinehurst, Apex, Chapel Hill. The only one it does is Wake Forest. So we've got Carolina Country Club does a fine job maintaining the course. We've got Lands' End down at Wilmington. Quell Ridge's coming up with a PGA Tour, does a great job. And then you've got Pinehurst number two. All of these golf courses and every one of these golf course communities comply with the noise ordinance and get no waivers. Why would Cary be the one that says, "We're going to give waivers and allow unlimited noise at 6:00 a.m.?" That's what's disturbing most of the neighbors. I think we've got a few emails. We only, I only found out about this Thursday. I was tied up. I didn't have really a chance to put it together. We've got a nice orchestrated promotion behind me, but I didn't have time to do that. We certainly could do that. But anyway, please, I don't think you would want that noise at 6:00 a.m. outside your house, and we don't either. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor and council members, I am Ron Woodard, and our family lives at 208 Lewiston Court in Cary and on the Preston Highlands #16 Fairway. As residents of Cary for 27 years, we appreciate the work done by the Cary Town Council to include the mayor even speaking at my son's Eagle Scout ceremony. As homeowners within Preston for 19 years, we are strongly opposed to noise ordinance changes which would allow an earlier start to landscape maintenance operations at golf courses. Golf course operators, often in conjunction with developers, had no problem with the noise rules in order to sell lots originally and allow homes as close as possible to the golf course for maximum profit, but now they want to change it to their benefit. According to the town of Cary staff notes, and I also talked to Cary Deputy Chief Godwin, the new changes are allowing grass to be cut on all areas of the golf course, not just the putting greens at 6:00 a.m. No areas of the golf fairways should be cut before 7:00 a.m. Secondly, it appears the town staff recommends equipment other than mowers can now be used at 6:00 a.m. Another bad idea. Thirdly, the change in noise decibels apparently won't apply to golf courses because they will be exempt from any noise limit, even at 6:00 a.m. 63 decibels is going to be pretty loud outside our window, and that's even if the town requires the golf courses to behave like everybody else. Yes, I've accepted some noise and a higher lot price as a trade-off in order to have a beautiful golf course view, but relaxing noise rules will cause an annoying issue to become a serious noise issue and likely result in the loss of my property value. Your own staff says, "Of the communities we examined, none carved out any specific exemptions for golf courses except the town of Wake Forest." You're not only continuing to carve out special rules for golf courses, but now you're making the rules even weaker, choosing the golf course management over homeowners. Your staff met with golf course management in Cary, but I'm on the Preston Board of Directors, and even though we went through a management company change, I don't recall any notice to our board and any big effort to meet with us and our numerous homeowners who live on the golf course. We just heard about it. I urge you to not weaken golf course landscape management rules, or maintenance rules, rather, and to not turn against homeowners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Bob Butler, and I live on the 5th tee of the Highlands Course in the Prestonwood Club. And until a recent medical setback, I was an avid golfer and maintained a full golf membership for the past decade, even owning my own golf cart. I love golf, and I love to sleep. With the help of some great medical professionals and some excellent community leaders, I hope to return to both of those. We've had many complaints about golf course noise, but it mainly centers around this 6:00 a.m. exemption even existing, let alone being expanded. The staff report says they changed their view after a meeting with golf management. It must have been quite a meeting for a 180-degree turn. So it left me thinking, well, what did I not understand? Is there a legitimate reason for this? So I did some research. There are over 60 golf courses in the nine-county triangle area. Only Wake Forest, Cary, and Morrisville allow golf courses to begin landscaping at 6:00 a.m. in season. There are eight golf courses in those cities. So what this means is that 87% of the golf courses in the triangle area are effective at starting their maintenance at 7:00 a.m. Well, then I thought, well, maybe Cary golf courses are just doing a better job with that extra time. But Cary golf courses are not ranked in the top five courses in the state. They're not ranked in the top 10. They're not even in the top 20. The first Cary golf course to be ranked on the state level is number 27 in the state rankings. If 87% of the golf courses in the triangle, including 26 higher-ranked golf courses, can begin landscaping at 7:00 a.m., it's difficult to see why we need this special exemption. In closing, I'm confident no one on this council would take a blower 20 feet from their neighbor's, a leaf blower 20 feet from their neighbor's bedroom window, and start blowing leaves at 6:00 a.m. And it's hard to understand why we should grant a private enterprise and contractors the rights to do something that we would never do ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Anthony Adams. I'm the general manager at Lockmere Golf Club here in Cary. I'm here to represent the club and the staff, and would like to say that we are 100% behind the staff recommendations and the staff report. We've had very, very few complaints in accordance to the noise ordinance in my four or five years that I've grown through the management at the golf club. So thank you for your time, and would just also like to reiterate that we are 100% behind the staff report and the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is David Dalton. I'm the director of golf course maintenance at Prestonwood Country Club, and I've also served as the golf course superintendent at McGregor Downs Country Club from 2000 to We have, in the past four years, we have had one complaint. I have been through this issue in the town of Morrisville also and in that area since the time, which was roughly four years ago. I have had no complaints. We go out of our way, we call them hotspots, and we try to stay away until the last possible minute. Recently, we had a complaint, and it was my fault. A new superintendent had started, and I had not informed him of this area, but it was after 7:00. As far as golf courses not starting before 7:00 at other parts of the state, I can give you a directory, and you can call them all. Everybody starts at 6:00, 6:30, depending on what's going on, even earlier with things. We are not here, we are here to provide a service to our membership and even to the homeowners that are backed up to us, as myself and the other golf course superintendents that are in, that are here tonight. If something is not right, whether it's a member's home or just a homeowner, we get the phone call, whether it's a complaint, there's a tree down, there's a drain stopped up, there's trash on the fairway. And being able to operate blowers on a limited basis for us in the morning times, blowing greens, blowing tee tops, it's imperative for what we do. It can be a financial, one wooden tee, one plastic tee can bend reels, that we have to clear these areas. We buy equipment to muffle the sound, depending on complaints. We do the same thing with fans. We go the extra mile to coat them, make sure rubber grommets are on to dampen the noise. I don't want somebody behind my house with a chainsaw at 6:00 in the morning either. We're very, we get it one way or the other. We're the guys that get the complaint, but the very folks that can complain are also the very folks that we are trying to provide a product for, and we hear if it's good or if it's too noisy. We want to be good neighbors, and we go as, we go the extra mile to try to do it. I did have the opportunity to meet with someone from the town, came out to visit us in the morning. I ran every piece of equipment in front of them. My decibel meter didn't cost quite as much as the town of Cary's, but even that individual stated that it's really not that bad. And we are cognizant of, we're not going to be running chainsaws anymore in certain areas. It was just a, it was a bad morning. It was basically what it boiled down to that day. In the meeting that we did have with the town...
I have to stop you now. I'm sorry, that three minutes...
It was very, it clarified a lot for us even before this came. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Anyone at all? Okay, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we move to item number four, which is the Consent Agenda. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'll take a moment to review our Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the Consent Agenda, we have minutes. Updated 2015 Western Wake Regional Wastewater Management Facilities Agreement with Apex in Morrisville. Fiscal Year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, or does a council member need an item pull for discussion? Motion to approve? There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And the second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no public hearings this evening. That takes us to item number 6.1, which is the first discussion item, and that's on mobile app strategy recommendations. Ms. Moran and Mr. Dixon will present this item, and council may take action. Ms. Moran.
Good evening, council. For your consideration tonight is the mobile app strategy. It's a set of recommendations put together by your Information Services Advisory Board as part of their work for you this year. Following remarks by Board Chair Jamie Dixon and Council Liaison Lori Bush, as well as any comments or questions from council as a whole, staff recommends that council accept the recommendations and forward the strategy to the town manager for his use as he deems appropriate in town operations. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is my privilege to present the recommendations from the Information Services Advisory Board about the Town of Cary Mobile Application Strategy. This recommendation passed unanimously from the ISAB. As you know anecdotally and from the biannual...
Very good. Biennial.
Biennial. Survey, the use of mobile devices and applications has exploded in the last several years. This has led new avenues for the town to engage its citizens, including bidirectional communication. It has also afforded citizens, who typically do not communicate with the town, a chance to do so, notably with younger people. As a side note, I was competing in a hackathon two weeks ago when one of the members of the other team held up his cellphone during their presentation and said, "Remember the cellphone you had in eighth grade? That's the kind of people that we're reaching out with with the mobile strategy." Yeah. The town has created and contracted for mobile applications so far, and will continue to make mobile a part of any application procurement strategy. The Information Services Advisory Board is very aware of the mobile trend and felt it important that Cary develop a consistent policy for mobile devices. As highlighted in the recommendation, issues of user experience, UX if you want to use the buzzword, application lifestyle management, lifecycle management, and security are paramount importance. There should be any discussion the town has about mobile applications. In addition, the board has several passionate, passionate individuals who want to be engaged and work with the town as applications come up for review. Finally, I'd like to publicly acknowledge Robert Campbell, who chaired the Mobile App Strategy Subcommittee, as well as members Jeff Smith, Fillmore Bowen, and John Traumatin. Fillmore and John are actually in the audience. These men did a yeoman's job and did a huge amount of work in the resource, research, formulation, and creation of the strategy. They also worked very deeply with staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Do council members have questions, comments, or a motion about the mobile app strategy recommendation?
I might have, I might have a comment or two, in case you were wondering.
Just a comment.
A few. I might have my notes right here on my iPad, my mobile device.
Ed writes his own paper.
Yeah. That's actually better because normally it's on spiral bound notebook. So first off, I'd like to thank Ms. Moran, Mr. Dixon, and the other members of the ISAB who are here, and some who are probably watching online or will be watching later on, on YouTube. All the members of the ISAB participated in one way, shape, or form, whether they were in the separate meetings or whether they approved it at our meeting after reading it. I'm sure you all have delved deeply into the mobile app strategy. So just in case you don't remember it, there were a couple of things that I wanted to bring up that I thought were important. First, what we're finding is more and more residents are using technology to communicate with the town. Just in our last budget, last couple of budget reviews, we had more budget information requests over social media and over email than we had people that came to speak at Public Speaks Out or the public hearings or called us or stopped by. 91% of our citizens have cellphones. And of those, more than 60% now have smartphones. So, they are accessing data using the devices that they have. And we have devices here in the town, or apps in the town already. You may not know it, but we have Jewel Bug, which is a energy management type of app that allows you to be more conservation-aware, the energy usage. You can pay all of your bills online, right? You can sign up for classes through the Town of Cary online. We have TransLoc app, which tells you where our C-Trans buses are so that you can make sure not to miss the bus. And we have a new Bike and Hike app that'll tell you where all the greenways are. And this effort is about three main things that Mr. Dixon brought up, which is important for our citizens. One is ensuring that we have consistency across all of our apps, that they look and feel like they're from Cary, right? So that when you pick up an app, you know this is from Cary and you can trust it. The other one is how the apps are designed and rolled out, making sure that we have consistency in the way we roll out the apps so that they are tested appropriately. And the third thing, which is, I thought was a big budget item in our Technology Services, which is about security and privacy. It's the latest and greatest thing, set of issues that we're seeing in the Wall Street Journal and everything. So, those are the real, main, important items I'm sure you got when you read the staff report. One of the things that I'd like to thank the ISAB, and I don't get to say it enough, is this huge brain trust. We could not afford to pay all of these amazing volunteers with their huge skill base. What they've given us in this, in this report is helping to guide the town. They're giving us their experience, their knowledge, and they're giving us a great deal of feedback, which I think is so important. And I truly thank them for giving up their time and their energy away from their families to give us this information. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the ISAB recommendations for the mobile app strategy and that council forward the recommendation to town staff for consideration and implementation where needed.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
I would just like to add, I'm fortunate enough to serve as the liaison to Parks Rec Cultural Resources Advisory Board, who happens to meet on the same night as the Information Services Advisory Board. Lori lured me in there one day saying they had donuts.
You can't.
I did. You had donuts. And since then, I've kind of attended a few meetings after that when I can, when Parks and Rec has ended. And I got to say that I have been incredibly impressed with the work that the board has done and your, your passion for what you do and how you really delve into the issues and ensure that you're really getting everything, you're getting all the meat off the bone kind of thing. So, I have been very impressed with that. I am not the app kind of person. We're actually taking a chamber trip tomorrow that I'm supposed to download some app to tell me what to do, and I have yet to do it because the last thing I want is another app on that phone that I'm not going to use.
Well, you're about to get it.
But I understand for a lot of people in this town and community, especially the younger generation, that is what they do, how they communicate, how they work, and so on and so forth. So, I, I agree with Ms. Bush's comments and I support it.
Very good. Other comments?
I don't want to.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for all you do, both of you.
Thank you, council.
And please thank the ISAB for all that they do. As we, as was said, they're a strong brain trust that we get to use for free. So, we're, we're very proud of them and very grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, council.
We now move to Agenda Item 6.2, Amendment to the Town Noise Ordinance Regarding Golf Course Facilities. This item was tabled at our March 12 meeting. Is there a motion to remove this item from the table?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've removed it from the table. And at this time, I'll recognize Deputy Chief Godwin, who will present this item. For clarity, I request that we go line by line so that council may give direction, whether to keep or amend or for each of these issues, whatever. Just to be clear tonight, what we're doing is giving staff direction on each of the questions that Deputy Chief has laid out, and maybe there are more questions that we want to answer. And then staff is going to go back, create the wording for the ordinance or the rewording of the ordinance, and that will come back for a vote from council. Okay, very good. All yours, Deputy Chief.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. And thank you for very eloquently laying out what our goal here is tonight. So, we were here before, it was tabled, and we, we left with the intent of doing a little more fact-finding, if you will. We did some, we had some conversations with some of the golf course operators. We had additional conversations with some of the citizens, as well as looked into a little more about what some of the other courses do in our area. And as a result, we have a number of recommendations here that look, that look quite different, quite frankly, than the first recommendation we had. And so, as the mayor said, we'd like to go through these one by one, get your thoughts, get your feedback on what it is that you intend as it, as it pertains to the ordinance. And then we will go away and try to write some language that will capture those intentions and get some approval for that at a later date. So, we start with our first issue, which is, simply should the ordinance allow an exception for golf course maintenance to begin earlier than other landscaping activities throughout the town? So, in other words, citizens can start at a certain time, should golf courses get an exception to that and be able to start at an earlier time. That is currently covered by Section 22105, subsection 10, and that allows that the mowing of golf course greens is allowed to begin at 6:00 a.m. during the months of April through September. I can tell you that after speaking to all the golf courses, all three of the Cary courses begin their operations at 6:00 a.m., and this includes both mowing and blowing the greens every day, blowing and raking the sand traps every day, mowing the fairways and tee boxes three times a week, and mowing the rough areas of the course, the rough grass, one or two times a week, depending on how quickly that grows. So, our options are, as we looked at them, we believe are, yes, to keep that exception in, which allows them to begin at 6:00 a.m. April through September, like it has for many years. Yes, keep an exception in there, but adjust those times or the days or the months. All those are options if the council wishes to change any of those particulars. Or remove the exception for golf courses entirely and they would have to operate just like any citizen would. Our recommendation is to go with option number one, which is to allow that exception to exist. We do recognize the need to, for a golf course to get in front of the players and get the course set up for the, for the day's play. And historically, I can tell you that it just hasn't generated a lot of calls for service to our department as it relates to complaints about the noise. We're just, looking back in our system, we haven't seen a lot. So, it seems to have worked okay in the past.
Okay, Deputy Chief, my first question, just to be clear to everybody, if we don't have an exception, what are the hours of operation?
7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, very good.
I just want to make sure that I understand, you say if we don't have an exception, but the current ordinance does have an exception.
Yes.
So, if we do nothing today, they can already start mowing at 6:00 a.m.?
That's correct.
That's correct.
I just want citizens-
But if we remove the exception, option number three is what I was making sure everybody understood.
Gotcha.
And we're talking about different hours.
Okay.
And when you consider ordinance, it's a little difficult to understand sometimes. The ordinance says that you can exceed 60 decibels. The part that allows golf courses to operate is actually in another section, which is the exceptions section. So, at that 6:00 a.m., with that exception existing, they can exceed those 60 decibels. A lot of folks were under the impression, as we went through this, talking to different citizens, that the golf courses could start at 6:00, but they still had to stay under 60. That's not correct. They, at the point that they can start at 6:00, they are no different than your neighbor who starts at 7:00. They can make as much noise with the golf equipment as, as golf equipment makes.
So, are you saying then before 6:00, they'd have to be under 60 decibels? Where does, does 60 decibels come into play?
That's exactly right. Before 6:00 a.m., they're just like every other entity in town. They have to keep it under 60. You could mow grass all night long, as long as it doesn't exceed 60 decibels. And there's a part in here a little bit later about how we measure that that we want to consider. But that is the standard.
And that is allowed today.
That is allowed today.
So, I could get my blower out and as long as I don't reach 60 decibels, my neighbor has no grounds to complain to me about.
That is correct.
Do you understand? Lori, you look confused. You understand?
Yeah.
So, Ed and I are over here going, no, I'm not sure we're, I understand.
Let's say you, let's say you have some kind of power tool and you take it out at 5:00 a.m.
Yeah.
You have to keep it under 60 decibels, right now, as the ordinance has written. But at 6:01, you can go out there and go above 60 decibels because there's an exemption in the exemption section for golf courses.
So, there is, let me say it a different way. So, there is no decibel level, or as the gentleman said, there isn't an unlimited decibel level allowed at 6:00 a.m.?
For golf course operations.
For golf courses.
That's correct. And then at 7:00 a.m. for your next-door neighbor.
May I supplement that a little bit? Tony, the ordinance does provide that, provided the equipment is operated with the manufacturer's standard mufflers and noise-reducing equipment and used in accordance with proper operating condition. So, that is part of the exception.
And I'll add that we're going to get to exceptions that talk about the types of equipment that can be used. And add those two together, now you have something different than anything's allowed at 6:00.
At, at 5:00 a.m., you were saying, there should be no mowing of golf courses?
They can.
If, if they go, yeah, if the device goes above 60 decibels?
Yeah, the golf courses could mow at 5:00 a.m. as long as they do not exceed 60 decibels.
Measured from where?
Measured from the property line of the complainant.
So, they could run a chainsaw across the fairway on the other side at 100 decibels, but as long as it wasn't hitting 60 at the property line, they're still legit?
That's correct.
As would be your neighbor. Right. Which is currently what's allowed today.
That's correct.
Are we ready?
Staff recommends option one. I'm open to council members' questions, comments, motions.
This is one of those cases where it doesn't sound like it was really that broken in the first place. So, I'm inclined to go with keeping it as close to what we already have. If we have to do clarifications, that's one thing. But otherwise, I'd like to keep the standards the way we've had it.
Same here.
Are you making a motion to that effect or?
Yes, sir. That's a motion.
Option one.
Motion for option one.
Second.
There's a second. Further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next question.
The next piece is, should the ordinance allow an exception for golf course maintenance during the off-season, which is October through March? We found out through this process, that's one of those things that I don't think anybody considered in the past. Golf courses obviously have to do a year-round operation, and currently, there is no exception allowed by the ordinance in those months, October through March. I can tell you current practices are, all three courses indicate that due to the grass growing more slowly in those months, the off-season, they conduct mowing and course preparation operations on a bit of a scaled-back schedule. Since tee times are generally later in the morning during these times, they do not start their daily maintenance until 7:00 a.m. during these months. So, the problem for the golf course operators, during the week, it's no difference. They could begin, they, they start their work at 7:00 a.m. and the ordinance allows your neighbor to start the work at 7:00 a.m. So, there's no difference there. The problem for the golf courses comes with the piece about the weekends. Your neighbor can't start cutting the grass until 9:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday, and if the golf courses wait till 9:00 a.m. to start cutting the grass and doing their maintenance, they say that's impossible to operate their business by starting as late as 9:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday. So, our, our options here are to allow the course maintenance to begin at 7:00 a.m., seven days a week, during that off-season period, October through March, or not grant any off-season exemption, as is currently in there. There is no off-season exemption. I can tell you practically that they do the work, but there is no exemption by ordinance that allows that.
So, they have been, they have been mowing as if they had the exemption on the weekends?
That's correct.
And we've had virtually no complaints.
That's correct, sir.
And where, and I don't want to really open a can of worms, where did the October through March come from? Was that originally years ago daylight savings time?
Honestly, I do not know. I know that our ordinance allows April through September exemption. So, October through March is those months that are left that is not covered by the exemption.
Because I was wondering if it were that, maybe we should state daylight savings time, and then if daylight savings time changes again, then we're, we're covered.
How much mowing do they do on Saturday and Sundays? That seems like they could do all of their maintenance five days a week and not really have to get out there on the weekends.
From what I understand from the golf course operators, they have to do, at a minimum, they have to do maintenance on the greens every day, seven days a week. The greens can't wait. That will include not just mowing, but also blowing. You heard one of the gentlemen talk about having to clear the putting surface from any debris because of damage, as I understand it, that can be done to the equipment and also damage that can be done to the green if a pine cone needle or a golf tee gets hung in that machine and drags all the way across the green. So, that's the necessity of blowing the green. A lot of people think, and quite frankly, I thought, they blew the green after they mowed it, but that's not the case. They actually blow the green first to clear the debris and then they mow it. So, they do the, they do the greens every day, and my understanding is they do those tee boxes about three days a week, and they do the fairways once or twice a week. So, perhaps the tee boxes and fairways could be done during the week. We'd have to ask them. I, I don't know exactly what that schedule is, but the greens, I understand, have to be done every day.
And I'm guessing, you're, you're the resident golfer on council, that since Saturday's their biggest day of the week, that they want to get up and running as soon as they can. So, if they can do maintenance, is other maintenance on another day, I'm sure they would.
I'm a senior. I don't do weekends.
You don't wake up in the morning.
Yeah, I don't wake up that early on the weekends.
Senior discounts.
No, I think the, I think the question before, what I don't want to, I think we should not get into is trying to micromanage businesses and how they operate. I think they know the weather, they know the appearances and all that.
Very good point. Yep.
And, and I would caution us just, you know, then it'll be another business that comes forward and so forth. The, the reality is, we've asked to try to provide guidance and structure. The practice has been at 7:00 a.m., the practice has not created any complaints of any significance. We're talking onesies, twosies. I know in, in my community, I've received two letters, one supporting option one, lifelong resident, 25 years on the course. The other one, a brand-new resident. You know, so, and they live next door to each other. So, you know, I don't think I have any other additional insight as, except being a bad golfer. But what I would, what I think is that the practice has been there, and I think we ought to legitimize that practice and codify it. And to me, the staff is recommending option one, and that's, that seems reasonable to me. I'll look for your all feedback.
Mr. Yurha.
The, what we're doing here is really two hours extra on Saturday and Sunday if we take your recommendation, is what this boils down to.
That's correct.
If we didn't take your recommendation, we took the other recommendation, technically, they would be obligated to wait till 9:00 o'clock on Saturday and Sunday. Whether they would or not, or whether they do or not, is another story.
That's correct.
But they would be obligated to wait. To me, those two hours on the Saturday and Sunday, residents typically will sleep in on Saturday and Sunday, a little longer than during the week. I think those two hours are precious. I'm here to kind of clarify this and not make any changes in the hour. So, I'm, I'm not going to, I'll, I'll be supporting option two on this. You know, it's, I'm going to be very flexible on some of the other ones coming up, but, but this is one I don't want to, I want to, using Gail's terminology, do no harm in this case, and, and keep things the way they are.
Well, the question is, what harm is being done?
The color harm. It exists at seven a.m. today.
Well, it's not supposed to.
The practice is.
I don't want to legitimize it.
You don't want to.
Do we, do we think, this is an important question for me, is do we think by allowing it to go at seven a.m. that practices will be dramatically different than what we have today?
No.
Because if it's basically the same, I don't see why we wouldn't just allow it at seven. But if it's going to be dramatically different, then I understand Mr. Yeha's concern, because if it's, you know, right now, we have, you know, a handful that do it, and then we change the law, and then suddenly, we have, you know, a ton of work that dramatically changes it, then I'd have reservation. I mean, maybe the approach is, if we do decide to change this, is to come back and revisit it at a certain point and see if it's working, if it's, if the mowing and whatnot has gone up dramatically because of those two extra hours, then maybe we have to kind of cut it back again. I don't know.
We do that with a lot of ordinance.
Yeah, we do. We revisit things, yeah.
I make a motion to accept stack of recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of option one, use, show of hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
I'm sorry, I was at four.
Okay. Motion carries forward to.
But I would like, I would like to say that, I'd like our police department to kind of just generally track this and see if it changes. And if it does, then I think this is something we ought to reconsider in the future.
Okay. So the next issue was, should the ordinance as it stands be amended to vary the times or days when general landscaping activities are allowed to exceed sixty decibels? This isn't necessarily related to the golf course, but it's just kind of that general standard. And section twenty-two, one oh five, ten, same section as deals with the golf course, but it also talks about, that's where it lays out lawnmowers and landscaping equipment used between the hours of seven a.m. and nine p.m. on Monday through Friday, and between the hours of nine a.m. and nine p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. That's what's currently allowed. Current practices, complaints of citizens, mowing prior to the allowable hours are extremely rare. The current ordinance seems to work well, as written for our community, with the exception of the golf course operations, which is kind of a separate issue. The options there are keep it as currently allowed and make no changes. The other option is yes, make some changes, adjust the weekday times and/or weekend times. They could be something separate and different. Or establish a seven day a week standard for stuff outside the golf course. And with this, staff recommends option one, which is keep it the way it's been because we just haven't seen a big problem there.
I'll make a motion.
And second.
There's a motion and second discussion. All in favor please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
For option one.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. So now we get into the part where we need some council direction on how we're defining terms. And this, we, what areas should golf course maintenance be allowed to begin early? Which sections of the golf course should that be allowed? And the issue is, how should the ordinance define golf course greens? That's specifically what it says in the ordinance, golf course greens. Currently, no definition exists within the ordinance. The Cary Police Department, in the absence of a definition, has been tasked with interpreting that ordinance, and we have traditionally interpreted that to mean the greens are the putting surfaces, or the, or what we, I think the layperson would call the golf course green. So the options here are, do we define the green as only the putting green? Do we define it as the putting green in the tee box area, or do we define it as any playing surface on the golf course? Again, following our continued research, we recommend, after we understood what it takes to get the course ready, we recommend option number three. Previously, we had done number one, but after the, after the additional research, we believe it's necessary to allow some work to occur on all portions of that course, of the course, in front of the golfers showing up for their tee times.
Okay.
So I just have one comment, and maybe it's just the semantic person in me, but if you ask a golfer where the green is, they will point to the putting green. They might take the word of putting out, but they'll talk, and the USGA talks about green as the putting green. I don't like the idea of the town of Cary going and redefining a term that's generally thought of in one way, shape, or form. I would rather, if we're going to do this, say greens and fairways and tee boxes and be a bit more definitive, because I think green might, people will read it and think, oh, you only mean the putting green. So I was curious if you had thought of that and what your input was on that.
Yes, absolutely, Ms. Bush. I think you're exactly correct. Initially, our goal was to define some of these terms. That's the term that's in there now. I think if we do agree to expand that to the different playing surfaces, I think that's probably what we would say, to include all playing surfaces, or something to that effect. But I don't think we would use the term green, but in effect, I'm looking to define what is there now, see what you guys think about how we should define that. And we will probably use different verbiage once we do that.
That's what I wanted to think.
I have a question. As far as now with the maintenance, these exceptions, are the golf course management groups, are they cutting just the putting green now under that exemption, or are they kind of just taking care of anything that is the golf course during those exemption hours?
It is my belief that they are taking care of the whole course.
Okay, so they're not limited?
I don't think they are restricting just to the green.
Okay.
Are we ready for a motion on this one?
I think.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to go with the staff recommendation of option three.
With the terminology.
With the terminology updated to be very clear on what's a green, what the mowing, or what the facility services are.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second discussion. I would just ask a question. Are you clear on that, or you need more from us on that one?
I understand, sir.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries unanimously.
All right. And kind of in that same vein, we're still trying to define some terms as they exist now. Currently, the ordinance says, talks about mowing of the, of the golf course greens. No definition of mowing currently exists within the current town of Cary ordinance. We have traditionally, again, in the absence of a definition, we've traditionally been tasked with defining that, and we looked at that very strictly as cutting the grass, not using blowers, for instance. I think our options here are to, number one, the use of powered equipment that is designed strictly for grass cutting. Other equipment not designed for grass cutting, such as blowers, would not be allowed. Or number two, expand that to the normal daily maintenance operations of the golf course operators, any of that equipment. It would not, and should not, I believe, or we believe, include chainsaws, chipper shredders, that sort of thing. But we're talking about the mowers, the blowers, the power rakes for the bunkers and that sort of thing, the things that are just necessary for the daily maintenance. The golf course operators did state that they think things like chainsaws and chipper shredders should be later in the day and not, not allowed early in the, in the day. So with that, staff recommends option number two.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. And then how should the measurements be taken? What methods should staff use to determine if a violation exists? Our current ordinance talks about sound levels should be measured on the A weighting scale, using a sound level meter of standard design and quality, having characteristics established by the American National Standards Institute or its successor body. We also stipulate that it has to be measured from the residential property line of the complainant. And then it talks about some multifamily structure options, and that can be taken either from the interior or exterior of the complainant's residential unit. Town ordinance does not stipulate whether the measurement should be an average over time or an instantaneous reading. We have always used our noise meter and used a sixty second average. That's the way we were trained on it when we first bought the unit, and that's just kind of the way we adopt, and we've always used it, but it's not in ordinance to say any particular way. As we looked at the options, the options as we see them are, you use an average over a set period of time, which is what we've always done. Use an instantaneous reading with a percentage of the total readings in excess of the limit constituting a violation. Or instantaneous readings with a set number of readings in excess of the, of the limit constituting a violation. Or the average taken over a set period of time with a cap, such that a reading in excess of the cap within the averaging period would constitute a violation of the ordinance, which is kind of a combination of the two. And that's one of the things that we heard from the citizens that we talked to, that using the averaging, it's, the lawnmower, for instance, may drive by the window of the house or by the residence, and it's allowed only for just a couple of seconds, and then it continues down the fairway, and then it comes back, and by the time it gets back, the sixty seconds perhaps is already taking place. And although when it first went by, it may have been at seventy-two decibels, the average over sixty seconds would fall under sixty and make it, make it okay by the ordinance. We believe by adding this kind of hybrid model, that the sixty second average is still our average. However, if there's a cap set, be it sixty-three, or sixty-four, or sixty-five, at any time during that reading, if it exceeds that, that brief instantaneous reading, then that would be prima facie evidence of the violation of the ordinance, and the readings could stop at that point. It doesn't matter what the average is, because it got up to a certain level that's considered too high. So staff recommends having that hybrid. We think it does give some allowances to, I think, what was a very good point by our citizens, that it's that brief noise that can be problematic sometimes. And that would imply, beyond just golf courses, that would apply to the noise ordinance in general.
Okay, I like that. Just curious where the sixty-three decibels come from. That's five percent over. Was that from some research, or where did that come from?
We actually got the idea from Wilmington. Wilmington has this hybrid model, and that's what they have in their, in their ordinance, is the sixty-three cap.
Ah, okay. Good to know.
I like this, is, you know, just as you demonstrated, you know, you could have that loud noise for just a few seconds, but then averaged out, it doesn't violate the ordinance. This protects people against that loud noise, even if it's just for a few seconds, and so I like it.
Are we ready for a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, motion carries unanimously.
And that is all the, all the items that we have, unless there are some other items that council would like considered in our.
There was one item I heard that, it was a situation where there was a complaint from a machine on the Preston course, and the person from Marsville complained, so they called Marsville, Marsville said, call Cary. They called Cary, and Cary said, call Marsville. And we want to avoid that. If we could word somehow, some way, whose responsibility it is in those situations, so we'll know what to do.
Okay.
That'd be the only thing.
Maybe we could ask Marsville to adopt the same standards we do.
Actually, they're looking to do such a thing.
Should have some consistency between the two.
Right, right. And that's the only thing I have. Council members have any additional direction? Do you have any idea how long this will take? Will it be like weeks, months?
We should be able to put all this wording together in just a matter of weeks.
Okay.
It shouldn't take long at all.
Very good. Thank you very much for all the work you've done so far and the work you're going to do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We now move to item six point three, the bid award for downtown park. Mr. Kuhn will present the item, and council may take action.
Thank you. Good evening, council. We recently received three bids for the downtown park. Unfortunately, they were all over the budget. In the staff report, we've provided some background information about the overall downtown park and the history, and some of the direction we've received to date about the design of it. After we've reviewed the bids that we received, there were several items within the bid itself that staff was concerned with, and that's why we're recommending rejecting it. We'd like to go back, look at some of those elements, and see if we can get those, the project back within the budget by making some of those changes. If there are significant scope changes, we would bring those back to council for you to review those sometime in the future. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from council?
What are you thinking on a timeline for this before you submit for rebid?
We don't have an exact schedule right now. Our consultants are working on some of the options as we speak. And if we can do it quickly and do items that don't require significant scope changes, we'd get the bid back out as soon as possible, within a couple of weeks. If it's significant, where we're looking at redesign, we need to bring stuff back to council and vet things, and that could be several month process.
Okay. Part of what was appealing with the downtown park construction was it proceeding in concert with the Academy Street construction project. If you're going to rip that whole area of town up, you might as well go ahead and do it all at the same time, so. I would really worry if this process were to take additional months and those two projects could not take place at the same time. So I have concerns there.
And in the staff report, you listed six alternates. Now, are those, they were included in the original bid, from what I can see? Are there things that you're thinking of removing when we rebid the project? Is that, or what is the?
The alternates, several of those alternates were listed based on direction provided by council, some of the lighting, the color lightings and things. So those would still be in future, in the future bid for the project. We may be looking at other options as we're looking at redesigning it, so that's something we would be looking at. We don't want to get a real long list of alternates when we rebid it, but there is, we would include some of those as alternates. Is it, was there a specific one you had a question on?
Well, the fountain lighting, the, is something I think we really, all of us really wanted, right?
Right. And I think that would be one. We would definitely keep the colored lights and the white lights in there as an alternate, so we can get a price for both of those.
Art was something we struggled with.
Yeah, but it was such a, I mean, it was like five thousand dollars compared to like the water and the pumps that were like a hundred and ninety.
No, I'm talking about like the entryway features and stuff, the big black poles.
Oh, the baluster.
Apps on them.
Those the art monuments that are referenced?
Art monuments.
And as we noted in the staff report, the art project has been pulled out as a separate. There's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar budget for the artwork. There's a little bit of coordination work that the general contractor would have to do, but there is a separate budget for the artwork.
So we're looking to cheap out on the park, but not the art?
I think you're, you're just going to ask for bids and these be itemized is what I thought. These, these will show up as items.
Right. We'll, we'll continue to have an itemized bid as we have in the past, but we may have a few different items in here when we come back, so.
We have final say in the end, so it's not like we're relinquishing anything at this time, right?
Right. As of now, we can't even come close to the budget, so staff is saying, what do you want us to do?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's almost eight hundred thousand dollars difference for the lowest bid to the estimate, which
Right.
kind of surprised me. Did it surprise staff?
It surprised us, and it also surprised the consultants. We are seeing prices inch up with the economy improving, but there is a few line items that were more.
An inch. Yeah. I, I think it would be good for us to have it itemized, be able to see specifically what the bids are coming in for the different elements, and then we can kind of, you know, select what's really important to us.
I agree. I guess for clarification, is, the art is off the table. Is that what you guys are saying?
No, I mean, anything's on, you guys can make any decision you wish at this point.
If we're talking about the park, we're talking about the park, you know? I'm not going to look to make something, lessen the quality in some areas and still proceed with what was proposed for the artwork. And I think if we're going to cut, then there needs to be cuts that are shared equally.
So, so maybe I didn't understand the staff report. The staff report, total base price included all the alternates?
The.
Or are the alternates above the base price?
Correct. We recommended, there was a one point two million recommendation. If it, if you wanted to award it at one point two million, that included all the, what we called the premium to add the color lights, add the third pump, and a few of those additional items. So that's what the staff report included.
Okay, so the base price was almost a million dollars more than the budget, not even including all the alternates? That's what I, that's the question. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't catch that the first time. So we're way off, over a million dollars off. Okay.
So the question is, we want to rebid it?
Well, what do you get by rebidding it? Are you just going to get a more itemized base price?
Well, we'll be looking at some, some of the bid prices that we got in this go around. There was some of the retaining wall items, and we're going to look at those items, see if we can either redesign it, possibly use a different material. If it's a different material, that's what we would bring back to you and say, instead of granite, it's X material, and show the comparison. But that's what we're working on right now. We don't have a list of any of those things at this time.
So the bids don't, sorry for asking a question. I just want to be really clear. So the bids don't include the detail necessary? Or they include the detail necessary, but you want to get. you want to get alternative design, alternative materials, and see if that lowers the cost?
Right. It included that detail, but we didn't want to go back and try to negotiate with the low bidder because of the difference in the bids. We didn't think we would be able to get the value that we needed. By going back, rejecting all the bids, and then rebidding the project, we feel like we'd get a better value.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, if I might mention, I think that's the important thing to consider, because when the bids come in, and they're that far off from what our estimates were, you know, staff is making the recommendation, and our suggestion, and our experience is that they're so far apart from our estimates, that just awarding a bid and working with a contractor is not going to get you anywhere near what you need to do. So, staff will take this back, will work with the consultants for some design options, and council will see that before it goes back out to bid. And we'll try to get it into a place where it will fit the budget council has appropriated.
Are we working with the same consultants that were so wrong?
My question.
Yes.
Can we rebid the consultant contract?
You're talking about big delays if you do that.
You know, I don't consider that a joke.
I don't consider it a joke.
That's a very serious thing when you're $800,000 off.
For cheap.
And they're the pros. There's something wrong there.
We can do that, but that will take a lot of time.
And right now, the redesign is on them to do that.
So, that's your balance?
Yeah.
It'd be like starting all over from scratch, then, is what you're saying? No. Well, I don't think, when you're looking at those options for materials and that, I think there has to be a lot of thought about not going on the cheap. I mean, I think there's something about the permanence, you know, of the park and the quality of the park. And, you know, if we're going to have a look and feel downtown of a certain caliber and quality, I don't want the park to now feel like, you know, something leftover, you know?
I agree.
You know what I'm saying?
I think we all knew what the initial costs were and what the costs of the adds we added were. This is disappointing. You said all this extra work is on the consultant's dime?
Yes.
Well, I think, you know, I understand the pragmatic part of it, and time's important, but I think they really need to be put to task on that. It's really frustrating.
So, you're asking us to reject the bids that were received on March 27th and to rebid the project?
Correct.
So moved.
I... A second.
This is a motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you.
Was that...
Our next item would have been the Deliger property at the beginning of the meeting. Oops, I skipped one, sorry. Downtown... Sorry, Mr. Boyd, jumped right over you after you've been sitting here all night. Next is item 6.4, Downtown Business Improvement District Expansion, and Mr. Boyd will present this item. Council may take action.
Good evening, council. At the March 24th, 2015 work session, council directed staff to explore the expansion of the Downtown Business Improvement District, also referred to as bid. The bid expansion is a multi-step process, and this evening seek council direction on the proposed expansion areas, as well as an extension of the development fees being paid by the town for new development. I'd like to highlight a few things before we look at the proposed areas. Greater details in your staff report, but I think it's important for us to just make sure we understand the Business Improvement District, how it can function of the many things that it does, just briefly. A bid is authorized by North Carolina General Statutes, is designed to define special service areas where projects or activities are provided to a greater extent throughout the entire jurisdiction. We have the ability to have a particular category that we look at within that, and that's downtown revitalization projects. And in those, there are improvements, services, functions, promotions, and development activities intended to further the public health, safety, welfare, convenience, economic well-being of the central city or the downtown area. And then, I'm not going to read all of these, but you can see through these examples the many different types of projects that can happen. Some of them very intuitive, from bicycle paths or dealing with traffic, and then some just from sponsoring festivals and marketing materials, coordinating with markets. So, it's a wide range. And what we have implemented this past three years with the waiving of, well, the town paying of the development fees is an example of how we could apply that. So, I'd like to go over the existing bid, just as a reminder. You can see in this area, it was established on July 1 of, or went into effect on July 1 of 2012. And bids do not expire. They can be dissolved by the action of council, but they do not expire on their own. What does expire were the impact fees. It was established for three years, and it ends on June 30 of 2015. The proposed bid expansion area, you can see highlighted, the areas to the left and the right. It's important that these areas are contiguous to the existing bid, and that they meet the needs of the services of the bid, which they do. There's one area that I want to highlight that was just a slight oversight on mine before this was published. If you look in the top right-hand corner of the North Academy section, you'll see that there's one property that's in the same as the MXDR that is just outside, and that was an oversight on mine. It would be included within that, and I've shown that highlighted in this map, so you'll see going forward. For the bid expansion timeline, you can see what we'd be doing here. One piece that I have added is on Tuesday, June 2nd. It's not a requirement, but we felt that it would be a good idea to have a public meeting for existing bid property owners and the expansion area if they had any questions, and to explain sort of what the bid is and what would be happening in advance of the public meeting or the public hearing. There was no incremental bid tax that was established with the bid, and we would continue that recommendation at this time with the expansion. The town payment of the development fees for the additional three years. One thing I would like to highlight is that during the previous three-year timeframe, staff budgeted $350,399, and $115,264 has been expended through nine projects. Nine projects are highlighted, and I think it gives you a good sense to see how it impacts smaller businesses, as well as larger businesses, and proportionately based on that development. And then, staff would recommend an additional funding through the budget cycle for the bid One amendment to the recommendation, so in addition, staff would recommend to authorize staff to begin the process to expand the Business Improvement District, as indicated in the updated map. Would also like to call for a public hearing on June 11, 2015, and to include the three-year extension of town-paid development fees associated with new development. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions, comments from council?
I have a question, just to, in the efforts of full disclosure. I own property in the downtown area that is not in the current bid, would be in the new bid. However, my business has already been improved. I look to be part of the district, and I've already paid my impact fees. Do I need to recuse myself?
I thought you were going to ask for a refund.
I don't believe this is...
I don't believe from this vote you need to be recused, and we can certainly look at it going forward.
Okay. Just been... Bid on this thing was before, so just want to make sure. I wholeheartedly support expanding the bid. I would have actually liked it to have seemed bigger, but I understand baby steps, and we'll get there.
We ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to begin the process to expand the Business Improvement District, and with the following new updated map that Mr. Boyd provided, and the three-year extension of the town-paid development fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you.
Now, we move to item 6.5, which was tabled at the beginning of our meeting, and that was the last item on our agenda except for closed session, and I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion pursuant to GS 143-318-11A, 1, 3, and 6, the move that we hold a closed session, to consult with attorneys employed by and retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment or conditions of initial employment of one or more individuals or prospective public officers or employees, and to prevent disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318-10E.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we're now going into closed session.
[518.32]
We'll reconvene our council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion, a second, discussion. All of you please say aye.
Aye.
We oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion, a second, discussion. All of you please say aye.
Aye.
We oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Why do you...
This has been a production of Kiri TV. Visit the Town of Kiri website at townofkiri.org.